Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of April 23, 2019. We call the meeting to order and thank the Garden Club for the arrangement. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor O’Connell?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. If I could ask David Nigel to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment is next on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes. John Barelier?
John Barelier.
He’s over there. Is he a teacher?
Hi, my name is John Barelier. I was a teacher in this district for about 26 years. About my 10th year of teaching, I came across an extraordinary human being. But let me go back to my history with my dad, first of all. I was raised in a small business, and dad was always teaching me. You see that guy over there having coffee? I wouldn’t hire him. Why, Dad? Look at the way he’s preparing his coffee. He’s putting a little sugar in, tasting it more. He’s not decisive. See that guy over there? I’d hire him in a second. How come? Look at the way he walks. He’s going somewhere. I learned how to hire people when I had my own business. When I was teaching, I saw an extraordinary human being. His name was Ron Guglielmi. Maybe some of you know him. He was the best friends of Mr. Horemus, Peter Horemus. Extraordinary human being. He came to our district as a substitute teacher. The kids would follow him around at recess time. They wanted to be in his classroom. They enjoyed learning from him. Teach me, teach me. He had charisma. Extraordinary person. They hired him at my recommendation, permanently. Hanging around the Senior Citizen Center for the last umpteen years. I’m now a senior citizen by far. I came across another extraordinary human being, Kathy Schmidt. She teaches exercise here. Fantastic lady. If you had the courage to visit her, I challenge you, visit her during one of her sessions and watch how she interacts with her students. Watch how they follow around. Watch the love between them and among them that she fosters, that she causes. Hire her. You’d be doing yourselves a favor. Hire her full-time. Find a position for her. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for being here. Any other?
Ryan Mersny?
Ryan Mersny, Cane’s Avenue. For several years, I have asked very selected and appointed city officials if we could get Congress through Jackie Speer to transfer the Navy base at the crossing to San Bruno. This has satisfied the complaints about the current hotel property at the crossing as it is larger and has easier access. I felt I was unable to do it myself as I have no standing. A certain elected city official has repeatedly claimed to me he had documentation from the U.S. government turning down this proposal. He stated I was not allowed to see this documentation. It was always vague and verbal, and I have no proof this was said to me. On February 26, the same elected official once again made this claim. He was in possession of a document from an unknown source that the U.S. government refused to consider such a proposal. The difference this time is he made the claim in front of two other elected city officials and another San Bruno resident. A few days later, in a chance encounter, I asked him again verbally to see this documentation. He again refused. On March 29, I submitted a public records request for correspondence between any and all city officials and Congresswoman Jackie Speer or any of her representatives from January 2016 to the present regarding the Navy base at the crossing. I wish to thank Mr. Zeparano and Ms. Huerta for their response. Their response was as follows. As such, after a thorough search, the city did not locate any responsive documents pertaining to the Navy base from January 2016 to the present. Again, thank you, Mr. Zeparano and Ms. Huerta, for your time. After forwarding Mr. Zeparano’s reply to the elected city official, he further refuses to let me see such correspondence because of some sort of security issues. The difference this time is he, this elected official, made these claims in text. My questions are as follow. One, what possible security issues could be raised by the city official’s correspondence to Representative Speer and/or her office? Why was the city attorney’s office unable to locate such documentation if it exists? Two, why would Representative Speer’s office reply with sensitive or secret information that would compromise national security? If that were the case, why wouldn’t the city attorney simply respond to my public records request by saying, “There is such documentation, but for national security reasons, I’m not allowed to access such documents”? Three, why would anyone in the Pentagon respond to a city official with sensitive or secret information that would compromise national security? Four, when can I expect this documentation to be released to me? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards? Is there anybody else here in the audience that would like to speak on an item that’s not on the agenda? Mr. Bryan?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I’m just here to talk about a couple of things. The tax increase, the sales tax increase. I’m not in favor of it. I believe the city needs to come up with other ways of generating revenue. Instead of passing it on to the residents and everybody else, I think that’s not the way, that’s the easy way of doing it. So that’s one of my thoughts on that. I know there’s other ways. It’s got to be creative. Come together, take some input from the residents, and I know you guys are well-versed on stuff like this, and I’m sure Jovan Grogan can come up with some things. They’re very smart people in the community as well. So, and also, you know, we’re seeing increases come from everywhere. Recology, every year, just, you know, it’s getting out of hand, I believe. And I’m speaking of other people’s views and opinions and thoughts on this. So I just really think we need to think about other things, restructuring within the city, finding other creative ways to generate revenue. I know we’re in a deficit, and so I think things, each department needs to be looked at thoroughly and addressed, and see what they can do to improve work production, be more effective, be more productive. That’s all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, too. Anybody else who wanted to speak on an item that’s not on the agenda? See not, we’ll move on to announcements. First item, Recology San Bruno will host a free compost giveaway to celebrate Earth Day on Saturday, April 27, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Beckner Shelter in San Bruno City Park. But please bring your own bucket. Item two, Operation Clean Sweep, which I’d like to turn to you.
Oops. The date is fast approaching. It is a week from Saturday, May 4. If you’d like to come and help clean up the city, it is, come register or just come to the park at 9:00 o’clock. We’ll give you donuts and coffee, and we’ll send you out to clean up whatever part of the city you’d like to, and then come back. And we, Recology is hosting a barbecue lunch, and you can meet your neighbors, and we have a good time, and the council will all be there helping out. And this year, we have a new kind of gift. You know, we’re always trying to reduce, excuse me, our reuse, and one of the things we’re trying to reduce is the use of one-use plastic bags. So this year, we are giving away, these are produce bags, so you take these to wherever grocery store you go to, and you take your produce, these are plastic, and they’re reusable. You put them in here instead of using the plastic bags, and then you put them in your refrigerator, and it keeps the produce much longer than a plastic bag does. And then you can wash it, you can reuse it. So these are the gifts for this year, and I hope you come and participate and get a gift. So I’m going to incentivize my council to come and do this if you pass those on as a reminder, and then I’ll have a few down there. So if you can’t make the date, if you can’t come to the park, please consider cleaning up your own yard or looking across the street and seeing your neighbor’s yard and going and knocking on the door and seeing if they need help. Because I know there’s a lot of seniors out there that can’t bend down and pick up weeds too easily, or, you know, pick up trash or trim their bushes, and some people just need a little bit of help. So if you can’t come to the park that day or the next day, try doing that and help beautify San Bruno. So that’s my thing. I’ll be right back.
Thank you. Next, item C. The city of San Bruno is offering up to 200 private trees to San Bruno property owners through a partnership with California Initiative to Reduce Carbon and Limit Emissions. This program is part of a statewide project and a great way to help the environment and save money. Visit the city’s homepage for program details at www.sanbruno.ca.gov or contact the Community Services Department at 650-616-7187. Next item, which is D, we’re going to receive the annual report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Good evening, honorable mayor and honorable members of our city council. I’m very proud and privileged to present our annual report of D-PAC Bicycle and Pedestrians Advisory Committee. This is a wonderful proactive committee that excels in outreach, as you’ll see in our report. We do a lot of things for our city. I’d like to introduce some of our members that are here tonight. Adam Cassetti is in Virginia. His mother is ailing, so he couldn’t be here, but he sends his regards. Walter Berg is a charter member. We were appointed in May of 2002, and so he has been a terrific, ongoing joy for our city, and a lot of dedicated work. Henry Mark and Cecile could not make it as Gus was unable. Our newest member is Matt Gaines, and you can see, we’re proud to wear our shirts that we, Emil Hans designed the design. He was a charter member, and you know him from Tanforan. And he will be receiving his shirt at our next meeting. Our very active city council liaison is Councilman Marty Medina, who has been a real resource to us. We’re very pleased to be working with you, Marty. And our staff, we are blessed with a very strong staff. Darcy is our director, and she is out of town at a conference right now, professional conference. And Rousha is here tonight, and she is a gift to us. She just keeps us on track, as does David Womber, engineer. Outreach and education. As you know, El Cristal School closed last year, and just before its closure, Walter and I, as you know from previous years, have gone to all the schools and make bicycle and pedestrian presentations to the children and staff and many parents that attend. And this photo is the guy before Weight Watchers on the left presenting to the kids. It was a really wonderful, beautiful day, and they love Walter because, as you can see, he’s in his bicycle garb, and his bicycle folds down to about this size, and when he opens it up, the kids are just amazed. And after the presentation, they can come up, and he always has a big crowd of children around him, asking him questions. And this year, we’ll be contacting either Allen or Bel Air, the only two schools we haven’t visited so far. The next activity will be taking place this Saturday, and I encourage you to join us. For many years, we’ve had an information table disseminating safety procedures for bicycles and how to cross a crosswalk properly. And in this picture, we have two young ladies, and then Max Engel, who was at this time an eighth grader at Parkside, now a freshman at Cappuccino High School, and he will be helping us once again. So we had a tragedy about eight years ago with a young lady from Parkside. She borrowed a bicycle, came down Niles, lost her brakes, and was killed. And as a result, we wanted to do something positive, so Walter and I sat down and we made 10 safety tips, and this will be one of the items that we will give away Saturday at our information table. And the most popular thing are temporary tattoos. The little kids, and they talk about safety things, and I want to thank staff for providing that for us. And we’ll have other items that we give away as well. We’re working with the fire department and the chief, Dave Presta, will be giving away helmets and working collegially with them. And that just shows how we’re doing our outreach. Another outreach is Bike to Work Day, one of our most favorite activities. We started with one, and this is our relationship with Walmart. Cecile is a member, she’s not a San Brunin, but she represents business in San Bruno at Walmart, and they have sponsored our refresher station at San Bruno BART for many years. Last year, we had over 300 passersby and about 180 people that stopped. And when they stopped, we give them coffee, bananas, power bars, tire repair kits, maps of bicycle trails throughout the county, and other items provided by Commute.org. And again, Walter and I have established a very close working relationship with them. Thank goodness they changed their name from the traffic congestion, five other words that go along with it. Commute.org is much more manageable. And they’ve been giving us many items to give away to our citizens as well. You can see, this is the refresher station at BART, and it runs from, we get there at 6:30 and we finish up about 9:00 o’clock. Last year, we started another refresher station at Caltrain, and that was sponsored by YouTube. And YouTube is going to provide the food and all the items for this year’s event on May 9. If anybody wants to work with us, I know Marty’s going to be volunteering. And so they couldn’t provide us with any people, so our committee will be staffing that station as well. So not many cities in the county have two stations such as us. The next one is the Posey Parade and Community Day in the Park. I believe, I should have been more knowledgeable, I think this is our sixth year for Community Day in the Park. Danielle Brewer, our superintendent of recreation, has done a magnificent job. Many of us have been there since the beginning on the planning, and it’s just blossomed into a fantastic event, and it brings our community together. We follow the Posey Parade, sponsored by the Sandrano Lions. And for those of you unfamiliar with the Posey Parade, it is the longest existing parade of non-motorized vehicles. And in the beginning, we asked if we could use our bicycles and join. They said, “No, we were too old, so we have to walk like the others,” except for the dignitaries who come in wonderful cars. The next thing is, our staff has worked with this, and one of our former committee members really pushed for the bicycle fix-it station at BART. And we came up with this idea so bikers could fill up their tires or do repairs, minor repairs, to their bicycle. And unfortunately, this has been vandalized, and it was a wonderful, so we’re going to try to take care of that. Rousha is the coordinator of the San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan. Ever since I moved in San Bruno in 1959, San Bruno Avenue has gone through many, many stages. And as we look at our sister cities to the south, and we see the improvements they have done, we also want to be on par with that and be proud of our downtown area. And so we were involved, many of our committee has been involved in the community workshop. That’s where we met at Caltrain and divided into two large groups, walked all the way up San Mateo Avenue, turned around at El Camino and came back, and then evaluated all the suggestions and ideas that people had. Then we had the stakeholder, Walter and Adam are members of that committee, and met with Rousha, and again, had input and outreach with that. The third one was the drop-in community workshop at Citibank. That was a fantastic event, and you can see the people there. All the plans were posted, and they had a chance to put input, what they would like to see on San Mateo Avenue. Everything from, “I want as many lights as Las Vegas,” to just a few tables. So we’ve got a big spectrum, and now the committee has to sort that out. Next are our goals and participation in the San Mateo Avenue Street Scape Plan. That’s one of our very important things that we’re working on. And continuing implementation of the Walk and Bike Plan, which was started with Dave Walter Ring. And we’re, the staff is working on that and keeping an eye. We have a chart that we notate all our business so we don’t forget, because we only meet six times a year, and we want to be on top of everything. We expand community outreach. You’ve seen how much we’re involved. And research and development and public safety announcements. We work with Miriam. She’s fantastic. We’ve had many about wearing helmets, being careful of riding on the bike trail with cars opening their doors so you don’t get into that, and we’ve really been proud of that program. Identified bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements. Cities, we do that at every meeting, and we’ve done things like improving the crosswalk by Highway 380 as it exits into San El Camino Real. So I would think I went over my five minutes, but thank you for indulging me. I also want to thank Robert Reichel, Rico, I made a mistake, Robert, sorry. And he has been one of our best supporters, and he’s written many articles promoting what our committee wants to do and has done, and I want to thank him publicly for that. Thank you very much. I’ll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from council? Marty?
I just want to thank you all for the work that you do, and as we rotate the council into the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we all get a chance to work with you, and I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that last year Rico did most of the work I just started, well, four months into it, but it’s really a pleasure to work with you, and thank you for what you do.
And on behalf of the rest of the council, what Marty said, too, is it is a lot of work. You’re out there personally and physically giving up your time, and we appreciate that. And so for those of the members that are here, thank you, and please pass on to those that couldn’t be here this evening, that we want to thank you again for all that you do. Okay, we’re going to move on to item E, received presentation on the results of Community Priorities Survey. City manager.
City council, Jovan Grogan, city manager. We have a presentation tonight that will be done by two people. One is Brian Godby of Godby Research that conducted a community priority survey. The other is Catherine Longley from Lew Edwards. But before they start, I’d love to give some introductory comments. So as the city council knows, in November, we kicked off a fiscal sustainability project that is really a comprehensive effort to take a look at the city’s finances, both operating finances and those that we use for our capital improvement projects. So as we know, we currently have a $1.7 million operating deficit, and we have a number of infrastructure challenges, largely with our roads, but also with a number of our city facilities. And we also, in that presentation in November, highlighted some of the issues with our stormwater system, where we do not have a dedicated resource for our stormwater system, but we have a number of improvements that need to be made that frankly have no funding source tied to them. And so this fiscal sustainability project really takes a look at the city’s operating budget with the idea of controlling expenditures, potentially shifting costs where we can, and also looking at revenue enhancements. And so there was a list of potential revenue measures that had been developed, and we had a study session on February 19 to go over all of those potential revenue options. From that study session, the city council decided to conduct a community priority survey with the goal of researching and getting information from the community on what improvements to city services are most valued, but also looking at a potential sales tax measure for either November 19 or November 20, at either a quarter cent or a half cent, the lower amount raising $2 million, the higher amount raising $4 million on an annual go-forward basis. In addition, the city is also looking at other opportunities to generate revenue. One of the things that the city has done, and the council implemented earlier this year, was development impact fees that take effect on May 1. So fees to new development, consistent with what other cities are charging, but really assessing a fee on new development to maintain and replace existing infrastructure. The city council authorized, and council has already embarked on audits of our hotel tax, so the transient occupancy tax that all of our existing hotels pay, ensuring that the city is receiving the accurate receipts from those, as well as we currently have an audit of our business license fees underway to ensure that all businesses in town are paying the appropriate fee. In addition, we have embarked on a fee study to take a look at our fees and ensure that we are charging our full cost on all of the projects that can bear it. And that study is scheduled to be complete in early 20, well, it’s scheduled to be complete in later 2019, with hopefully new fees taking effect in 2020. And so one of the various components that we’re looking at is a potential sales tax measure. And so I will now turn it over to our presenters to really talk about the results of the community priority survey and the next steps thereabout.
Thank you so much, City Manager Jovan Grogan. Hello again, City Attorney Mark Zeparano. Mayor and council, hello. My name is Jennifer Longley. I am here as a representative of the Lew Edwards Group. We are your lead consultant in this project. If we could go to the first slide? Hello? Oh, thank you. So I will be going through this project a little bit and then handing things over to my colleague Brian Godby. The city is in a happy position. We are pleased to inform you of your initial perspectives from the city’s delivery and service. Your residents are incredibly satisfied with the service that the city provides, and so we are happy to give you that information. Brian will be going over in greater detail, but we do have some interest of your city from respondents in potential local funding solutions, and we’ve tested quite a few. Should the council wish to proceed, you are viable either Should the council wish to proceed, you are viable either this year in November of 2019, or potentially in 2020. Those are the two dates that are available to you at this time. A little bit about us and our firm. My name is Jennifer Longley. I'm your consultant and project lead. The Lew Edwards Group is nationally recognized in communication and outreach, specifically within the municipal space, and we are your lead consultant here. We have extensive experience in the peninsula in general, and in San Mateo County in particular, as you can see. And we are working closely with both city staff and Brian Godby in all aspects of this planning. And I'm going to turn this on over to Godby now. I will be back at the end of the presentation. Brian?
Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm pleased to be here this evening to give you the results of the survey that we conducted. And you know something about that from my associate, Charles Hester, who was here some time back to talk about the details of how this would work. To go more into those details, a little bit of the research objectives, the purpose was to gauge satisfaction with the city's services. And so, there's a section on the survey about that, to look at perceptions about problems facing the city. That's the, again, the resident satisfaction part. Then we assess the potential viability of a potential local funding measure to maintain essential services. And then we also looked at priorities. And that's one of the things that obviously are the most important, probably, is to figure out what it is that the residents of San Bruno want. In terms of the methodology, in the old days, these were phone surveys. Those days are long behind us. We used to do cell phone and landline. We've since added email invitations to an online survey and text invitations to an online survey. And the text invitations have become the biggest portion of our interviewing. A lot of people say, "Well, how does that work?" And it's pretty simple. We send out a text message, and then, and people click on a unique link, unique to them, and go to an online survey that they take on their phone. A lot of people then say, "Well, doesn't that just give you a bunch of 18-year-olds?" And the answer is no. And because everybody uses texts now in every age group. The universe that we surveyed was concentric circles, really. It was likely November 2020, which is presidential election turnout, which is the largest that we see in a four-year cycle. Then there was a subset of that, which is the November 19 election. And those are the two elections that are options for you to put a potential measure on the ballot. We were in the field from the 22nd of March through the 26th. The average phone interview length, because there's still some of those, was 22 minutes long, and that's become a metric. We don't know how long it takes people to do an online survey, because you can now start, go have dinner, come back after watching your favorite show, and take the survey and finish it at 2:00 in the morning. So, that might sound, seem like it was eight hours that people were working on the survey, and that's obviously not the case. The sample size for the overall universe, that larger circle, was 627 for the November 2020 group, and the subset was 347. Our goal contractually was to do 400 interviews, but one of the advantages of doing all the online work is we no longer have to shut the switch off. When we're doing phone surveys, we got the 400, we were done, because every incremental survey costs a lot. On the online portion, all the effort goes in upfront, in terms of programming and sending out the invites. And so, we just let the meter keep running, which is helpful, because it increases our error rate. And so, we get a margin of error for the November 20 at 3.85, and for the November 19 at 5.17, which is a good error rate, particularly for a city of this size. Moving into the key findings, the first couple of questions deal with, again, the resident satisfaction component of it, so it's not directly the revenue measure portion. And the first question was, are you satisfied with the city's efforts to provide services to the community? We ask very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, somewhat dissatisfied, and very dissatisfied, and then don't know or no answer. For analytical purposes, it's easier to add the positive side and the negative side together, so you get 59% in round numbers satisfied in the November 20 universe, or all respondents, versus 26% in round numbers dissatisfied. We then do a ratio of the positive to negative, and you can see from the little box on the left-hand side, that for November 20, we're at a 2.3 to 1, so that's 2.3 to 1 positive. So, that's a good place to be, as Jennifer mentioned already. We compare that to November 19, it's actually a little bit higher, which is also a good thing, and probably says, suggests that the November 19 universe might be an advantageous place to be. The next question was a little bit more open-ended, and asked people what they thought the largest problem facing the city was. And so, necessarily, because this is open-ended, the percentages go down, because it's top of mind. But we can still use the same error rates that we looked at earlier to define really groups of items. And at the top of the list is the affordability of housing at 13%, and then the condition or safety of streets, and that was at 10%. Those two are essentially statistically tied. It's not surprising to me to see affordable housing at the top of the list, because that's at the top of the list everywhere in San Mateo County. And it's become one of the two-edged sword, if you will, of the successful economy, as I'm sure you know. The second tier, we have quality of education, cost of living, which is obviously related, again, to affordability of housing, too much development or overcrowding, availability of neighborhood parking, and not enough development. From there, we get into the small, single digits, which could easily be zero with the error rate that we have on the survey. So, at this point in the survey, we switch gears and we go to the actual potential revenue measure. And you can see the question that we asked was in the right-hand side of the slide in that box. This is a 75-word ballot statement that meets all the legal requirements, and certainly your city attorney reviewed and approved this as something that we could actually put on the ballot. You can see there, there are several bullets are the things that you might spend the money on. This is positioned as a general revenue measure, so these are things you might spend the money on, but are not necessarily constrained to. It's a one-half cent sales tax. It provides $4 million a year, as the city manager alluded to earlier. And it would be in effect until ended by voters. And then it would also have a citizens oversight committee, and none of the money could be used by Sacramento, it'll all have to be used here. Again, we have categories that are fairly distinct. Definitely yes, probably yes, probably no, definitely no, and then again, don't know or no answer. For analytical purposes and to determine feasibility, we add the definitely and probably yes together. And you can see in November, we're at 67.6%, 68% in round numbers. And in November, we're at virtually the same, but just a teeny little bit higher, not statistically significant, at 69%. Both of those are well above the simple majority required for this type of measure. You can also see that in the November 19, the definitely yes are just a little bit higher, again, not statistically significant, but that's always encouraging. The next slide gets into those resident priorities that we talked about at the outset. And this is a list that was positioned, or given to them in random order, whether they were on the phone or online. So, no item was always first or always last. And we read the item and then said, "Are you much more likely, somewhat more likely, somewhat less likely, or much less likely to support this measure we were already talking about?" Because that results in a lot of different percentages, and it's hard to just glance at it and really see what is meaningful and how they rank. We do an intensity score, and that's what you see here. It seems abstract, but the way we do it is we assign numeric values to each of those response categories. So, a much more likely is a 2, somewhat more likely is a 1, a somewhat less likely is a minus 1, and a much less likely is a minus 2. This solves a bias that you get when you just add percentages together. And an example of that might be, if you've got an item that is 40% much more likely, and 20% somewhat more likely, that's 60%, right? But you could also have an item that was 20% much more likely, and 40% somewhat more likely, and that also adds up to 60%. But you can see from this example, that's an entirely different 60%. So, and the difference is the intensity of one versus the other. This score, again, while seeming abstract, eliminates that bias inherent in just adding percentages together. And it also takes into account the negative side of this equation, as well as the positive side. So, what you see here is that our top tier, and that's defined as a .2 difference from high to low for statistical purposes. We have increased pothole and other street hazard repair at 1.19, which is a great score. You can see, associated with the arrow on the right-hand side, that that's 79% in round numbers, at least somewhat more likely. So, that's the most important priority for residents. We asked a variety of different street items, and they all graded in the top tier. The next one, increased street repair and maintenance programs, and then finally, maintained street repair and rehabilitation programs. So, we're using different words to deal with the same subject, which is part of the objective of the survey, but you can see they're all in the top tier, and ranging from 1.19 down to 1.04, or that 79% at the top down to 74%. So, again, with that error rate, you can see how we grouped them together statistically. So, obviously, repairing streets is really important. And it was one of the top items in the open-ended question, although here, we're obviously giving the people these various categories. In our second tier, we have maintained neighborhood police patrols at .88, sorry, couldn't read my own notes. And that equates to about 67%, at least somewhat more likely. So, you can see this second tier, while very important, certainly 2/3 is a good score, is lower than that top tier. We have attracting and retaining small, our local small businesses, maintaining city parks and playgrounds, maintaining and repairing park structures, upgrading city park and playgrounds, and then maintaining youth and teen programs. The next set of questions is much the same methodology, although there's a minor difference. These are benefits, and these are the items in the chart that are of most interest to the public in our survey. The difference between this and the previous, we've still created the intensity score, but the scale is different. So, it is 2, 1, 0. There's no minus 1, minus 2. We can still do all the same things in terms of ordering these and telling you which is the most important, but the only caveat is you can't compare the 1.48 directly with the previous set of questions, because it's just a different response category. So, in our top tier here, we have by law, funds from this measure must stay and benefit San Bruno, cannot be taken by Sacramento, at 1.48, or at about 80% in round numbers. None of the money raised by the measure would be used for administrator salaries at 1.38. The measure will help maintain streets, repair potholes on more than 89 miles of streets in the city. If the measure is approved, street and pothole repair efforts will be enhanced to include residential streets. And finally rounding out the top tier, many streets and roads have not had major repair in more than 30 years, at 1.29. That equates to about 76% rounded numbers, at least somewhat more likely, support the measure. So, again, you can see how everything is grouped together in this top tier. I won't read the next two items down, but they're also positive as well, just at a slightly lower level. So, after we've provided a whole variety of information, including some of the things we've summarized, we come back to our ballot question, again, same wording on the right-hand side of the slide that we had previously, to see what's happened. Have we gone up or gone down, based on all the information we've passed on? And you can see there's a slight decrease in November 19, we're at 63, and November 2020, we're at 64. Again, there's no statistical difference between the two of those, but they have gone down a little bit. Statistically speaking, there's no difference between the first test and the second test. But the good news is that at 63%, we're still 13 points above the simple majority required for this type of measure to be successful. So, we think that's a good place to be, but we didn't know we would be at that point. So, we had some follow-up questions. And the first one was, instead of a half cent, what about a quarter cent? And what you can see here is that we're at 60%. Statistically speaking, there's no difference between that and 63 in the November 19 universe. It is a little lower. I think that probably what has happened is it's not uncommon to see people say they want something that can address, you know, as many needs as possible. And the rate isn't really an issue, and that's clearly what's going on here. The other set of follow-up items was about the duration. And you remember, the duration that we had, the specific wording was until ended by voters. So, that gives the respondents, or the voters as a whole, the power to end the proposal whenever they choose. What we did is we tried a fallback of, what, about 18 years, which is, takes away some of that power. And what we see instantly is that people don't like that. They like the flexibility of having it until, until they want to end it. And so, 18 years doesn't really work. We also had a second follow-up, which was nine years, and that does better, but still not at the same 63% level. So, that concludes the data that I'm going to share with you. I'll turn it back to Jennifer, and she can wrap it up.
As you can see, you are viable for future planning. However, it is our best advice as your lead communications consultant, that in this community, in this environment, that the community likes to have additional input, that they don't want to be told, "We talked to certain people, here's what it says, we're moving forward." Folks like to feel engaged by their government in a proactive way. And it is our best advice that we engage in that additional and proactive outreach. So, view any proposal as being collaboratively outreach as being part of the solution. And so, over the coming eight to 10 weeks, we would like to continue working with your very excellent city staff to inform, engage the community, and talk to them, utilizing our initial outreach as the basis. Inform and engage additional items or of interest to residents, ask proactively for input, so engage in two-way communications, not simply speaking to them, but asking them to speak to us. And come back to council with additional perspectives, and so that you, at that time, in your wise judgment, can choose whether or not to move forward, placing something on the ballot for the voters to decide. You do have some time. Our statutory deadline for submitting your measure to the county is 88 days in advance of the election. We are planning for most of our other folks looking to potentially go in 2019 and early August. And the staff will return with potential language and updated community input at that time.
Thank you. Anything else, City Manager?
Thank you.
No, we can take public comment, and then we will respond to council questions.
The public comment was rescinded.
Okay, is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to speak on this presentation? Okay, first of all, on behalf of the council, you know, thank you for your presentation, of course. And I would also say, on behalf of the council, we appreciate folks taking the time to respond, whether it was at 22 minutes via phone or on the online. So, you know, we do appreciate that, because that's a time commitment. Sometimes folks don't wish to give at this time, but we appreciate that. And I know that we'll open to council very quickly, and then I know, as far as that, we'll be looking forward to staff continuing the open dialogue with the community, as was alluded to. And then I know it will be returning to the council in about eight to 10 weeks. So, any, anything from council this time? If not, I'll move on to, well, first, I don't want to make you think like we listened to the presentation, it was very informative, so I don't want you to think less because of comments. Oh, okay. Marty?
So, when the, when the first question, the largest problem facing the city, that was just the question, and then somebody had to type that in, or they verbalized that, but there was no prompting?
That's correct.
Okay. And specifically, what could you tell us now of how that engagement with the community will occur?
Absolutely. We are, of course, will continue to work with your excellent city manager and city staff. We would consider a multi-dimensional engagement with your community. So, that would include potentially putting additional information online and asking for response back there, proactively going out, potentially into the community to provide presentations, and also ask for input. Of course, and please do stop me, city attorney and city manager, but we would and city manager, but we would, of course, make sure that any outreach that we do in advance of doing so is blessed and compliant before we do so.
And I'll just add to that. The community outreach actually dovetails nicely with our budget process. And so actually, beginning as early as tomorrow, we'll be prepared to publicly release the results of the community priority survey and immediately begin to launch into conversations with having various community education sessions during the month of May. And then in addition, we will have a city council budget study session on May 29th, and we'll have that presentation by the finance director of the dates, and additional conversations around our budget. And so what we want to do, as Jennifer said, is have a multi-dimensional communication. We're also planning to have mailers to the community. The council has asked, and actually aside from this process, we want it to reactivate the city focus. And so we will issue a city focus newsletter that will have a section to really educate the city about the city's fiscal condition. We've given at this point, over the last few months, a number of presentations at the, at the city council level, but as you know, we really don't reach the vast majority of our community here. And so we really want to, as Catherine said, go to them and listen in a two-way communication format. And that may look like various ways, meeting with some of our service organizations, neighborhood meetings, likely a meeting here at the senior center. And we will immediately begin to put together those dates and announce them.
If I can just follow up, so like a town hall and pop-ups like we did for the streetscape, we would maybe have that kind of interaction of where people could come in and kind of hear about that, or?
I wouldn't call it a town hall, but it will be information sessions on the city's fiscal condition and the budget in various communications, mainly more small group, but at least one where a number of community members can be invited. But one of the things that we found is evening meetings at one location is sometimes difficult. And so there are a number of organizations that are already meeting, and so we've had some conversations of tapping into those meetings and being a guest speaker at community meetings that are already happen, happening, in addition to having one meeting where if people are available and can attend an evening meeting, that they can do that.
Good. Thank you.
Laura?
So thank you for the presentation, and I echo the comments made by our mayor. I'm not surprised by the responses, and I'm not surprised by the residents' reactions. And so it's actually good to see that our thoughts and our understanding that we have today is really, we are online and we, we're not at a sync with what the needs are of the community. So thank you for the presentation.
Michael?
Just a quick question. In terms of the response rate that you got from the survey, how does that compare with what you've seen in other cities, other communities? Are we pretty much on par?
Yeah, the short answer is yes. Response rate, though, is not something that's part of the statistical calculation. That's an entirely different algorithm, but this is fairly typical for a city of this size.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, once again, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate your time. And then we'll go ahead and move on to consent, please.
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implements in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Any action on consent? Move to approve? Motion made in second to approve the three items on consent. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five vote, voice. Now conduct of business.
Item six A, schedule budget meetings to review the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 annual operating and capital improvement program budgets.
Finance Director.
Okay. Good afternoon, evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. I'm Keith DiMartini, your Finance Director. I just want to present an overview of what the planned budget meeting schedule is for this upcoming fiscal year 2019-20 budget cycle. So every year, the city does schedule special city council sessions, meetings to review and consider the city's proposed annual operating and capital improvement program budgets. The study sessions allow, meetings allow the city council to review and consider issues related to the preparation of the operating and capital budgets and the work program. The budget study session meetings also allow the city council an opportunity to provide staff with direction regarding work programs and city manager proposed service level enhancements. The table on this slide lists the proposed budget schedule for this budget, for this budget year. So the first meeting that's tentatively scheduled is on May 29th, starting at 10:00 a.m. and lasting pretty much the entire day, where we will present an overview of the proposed budget, and all members of the senior leadership team will be there and be available to answer questions about their specific department budgets. And then the next, the next session is scheduled for June 11th, before the regular meeting for city council, where it will be a continuation. If there are additional questions and comments from council, we can answer them at that time. And then the next session would be held the next day, on June 12th. Again, a special study session, a continuation to review any additional questions. And then finally, on June 25th, before your regularly scheduled meeting, again, if there were any additional comments or questions or topics of discussion, we can take them in a, in a special study session prior to the meeting. And then at the meeting, at seven o'clock on the 25th, we would hold a public hearing and request council to adopt the operating and the capital budgets for fiscal year 1920. So with that, I welcome your feedback on the proposed schedule and the structure of the hearings for the upcoming budget cycle. Thank you.
Hello? Laura, I mean, Irene, I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's okay. It's hot. It's hot. Are we doing anything special to make these dates and meetings more public than we have in the past? And the reason I'm saying that is we typically post these things on our website. We get maybe one or two people, and then that's it. And then people complain later that they, that we're not transparent, or we should be doing more than we've done. And so I just want to see if there is something we can do to kind of up the ante as far as public outreach goes.
City Manager?
Sure, absolutely. What I don't know that we've done as of yet is post our budget meetings on Nextdoor and do a citywide post. We can do that. We can look into doing a press release. What I'll tell you, in my experience, having been a budget officer in another city, oftentimes, unless there's a very, very contentious issue, people, while they, while they care, they're not often willing to do the trade-off between putting their kids to bed or watching that favorite show and come out to an afternoon city council meeting. And so our communication about our budget and our fiscal challenge is really going to have to be multi-dimensional, and that's part of getting into what we talked about with the public education around our fiscal condition and any potential revenue measure is having meetings where we kind of meet people where they are, if they're a part of a service organization. We get on that calendar and give a presentation there. But we will certainly post it on our website, do a citywide Nextdoor post. Some of our more successful meetings as of late have involved where we've sent direct mailers to every household. Those are typically for smaller meetings where it's a development project specific. We can draw a 300-foot circle into a mailing. Unfortunately, a citywide mailing in San Bruno runs about $6,000 per mailing, a large part of that being postage. And so we will absolutely continue to find ways to bring people out. And the one addition that we are doing this year, in addition to the various other meetings, is having that all-day city council budget retreat on May 29th, beginning at 10:00 a.m., looking to go either to four or five p.m. But to really have an in-depth conversation with the city council about our budget challenges, where we are kind of not constrained immediately by the falling nighttime hour, but really have some time for the city council to sink their teeth into the budget. And that will also be a public meeting, and we will notice that as such.
Okay, thank you.
Marty?
Thank you. I think it's great that we're starting all of this because, and it's being done differently because approving the budget is probably one of the most important things a council I share the kind of the similar thoughts with having, having more people attend. And like tonight, you know, seven o'clock, we have a few, thank you for showing up, people watch online. So my concern here is at 10 o'clock, you know, someone's going to have to either be retired or take a day off of work. So are we planning to put this on YouTube, the meeting, so that people could later on take a look at it? If they take a look on the 29th, they might get a little fired up and go, you know what? I'm going to go to the six-eleven one because I heard something different that I really don't like, or maybe the different idea. So, so if we're going to do this, I think, I'm asking that we should have some way of sharing our meetings recorded. It's the most important thing we do, and people can clearly go back and go, well, you had your opportunity to come and hear, and it's here. So those are, those are my comments for now.
I don't know if you're flexible on the six-twelve date, but if that can be moved to a little bit later, before the 25th. Already stated that I won't be in town on the sixth-fifth through the 14th.
Irene?
Oh, I just.
And then Michael?
You know, we, I think it's a great idea to put, to announce the meetings on Nextdoor. I think that's an up-and-coming way to communicate with people. And I, and I don't know if this is possible, but is there some way that we can do, maybe a monkey survey or something, to get people to give us input about what they think is important beyond, something more personal beyond the survey that they just took? Something like, you know, please don't cut swimming, or we love the police, the bicycle police patrol on San Mateo Avenue, please consider keeping that. Or, I don't know, just more personal kinds of responses that we, we wouldn't get at a study session either, that it's, that we can kind of compile and see, just to see what people are talking about, that we don't always get a chance to know.
Sure, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Mike? In discussing, you know, making the meetings more known to the public and expecting a bigger draw, I don't know that it's necessarily such an interesting topic, and I mean, if I had a choice, I don't think I would go to these meetings, but I guess I don't have a choice, I have to show up. I was thinking maybe in, to get the, to get the information out, if we were able to summarize things, and I think the city manager has talked in the past about doing smaller handouts, infographics, things that just kind of highlight things about how dollars are being spent, where the dollars are going, how they're broken down, where it comes from. So then the public is informed, and they don't have to sit through an entire day of, you know, getting into the minutia and understanding all of the mechanics of it, but still feel comfortable that they understand how their tax dollars are being focused. So if, you know, we can plan on doing that in conjunction with these meetings, I think everybody could benefit from that.
Absolutely. And one of the things that we've talked about is doing a reader-friendly budget, essentially a high-level, two-to-four-page document that summarizes what is a 300-page budget document to really make it more accessible and available to the community. And so we will certainly look at doing that, and we've talked about potentially making that available this year.
One final comment, you know, an interesting comment that you continue to hear, and we heard a comment tonight under public comment about, you know, we need to cut back, we need more lean. And the reality of it is the city cut back many years ago during, during difficult times, and there's never been good times. It's always been a lean city. And so there's got to be a simple way to be able to tell the story. And it has to be told in a very understandable, obtainable way. So I think, I think through the comments, you guys get where we're coming from.
And for me, I know I just, you know, I deal with the budgets, so it intrigues me, but I went back to the '08-'09 staffing component for the city of San Bruno to the '18-'19 approved budget and was doing some comparing to see where in different divisions and different departments where we were then are now. Has it gone up? Has it gone down? Has it stayed flat? And I think some of those are important factors for folks to understand. Would I, and correct me, but on, and again, for the record too, it's our city manager and our finance directors' first time facilitating this budget. And as it is important for us to approve the budget, it's probably one of the most significant parts of their jobs is to provide and the city manager's recommended budget, which will have a city manager's message, as has in the past, that helps to put together and help understand where we're at, where we're going within the recommended budget, which is not adopted at that time. I believe also in the June, whenever the June events are, those usually have been in the past recorded, so those have been available then and should be available now. What I also was a little taken back, but understand, is the 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I thought, really? So, but at the same time too, what I do appreciate from what I'm understanding is staff has spent a great deal of time, along with department heads and personnel, and did not only just say, so where are we at and what do you need? But to really go deeper and understand and ask the questions, why? Why have we done it? How are we doing it? Help me understand where we need to go. And I think that is something that I appreciate, that all the department heads, because a lot of them, it's new for their first time for this budget, as well as to the finance director and manager, who are again doing something that is out of precedent, something the city has not done, but it is a critical time. And this council has been, as far as this year is concerned, for revenue, looking at that, looking at the budget early, and going to this 10 to 5 is again the focus of this council, trying to ensure that this city has good footing, good future, and that we get done what the citizens expect of this community.
Irene?
I have one more comment, and you're probably doing it, but just so we also emphasize it for people who are listening. We get a lot of state mandates, and we have to comply with what the state says about different things, like the storm drain, trash catchers that we have to install, and many other things that are coming down the pike, so to speak. And we don't get those funded from the state. They just say, you have to do this. I don't care how expensive it is, you do it. So I think that's something that people need to understand as well. So I'm just throwing that comment out there so we can make sure that's covered.
So Mr. Finance Director, can you have all that, all that done by next week? Sure, no problem. Okay, got it. So there has to be some rescheduling tweaking potential that was brought up. There's been a lot of feedback from council, so appreciate the work that's done and what will be coming forward. And we'll go ahead, do you have enough? Okay, we'll be, move on to item B.
Item six B, appoint youth representative to the Parks and Recreation Commission. On April 10th, the city council held an interview session with five applicants for the Parks and Rec Youth Representative position. And the applicants who are up for nomination tonight, there's one nomination that will win in this, Karina Diaz, Tanya Fish, Nadia Koshafa, Priyashna Singh, and Abigail Tolentino.
What I also wanted to point out is that we did hold interviews at San Bruno City Hall and with guidance from our city clerk, because it's the youth and obviously wanting to engage them in the community. But what also was rewarding is that we had five applicants, which usually, you know, you're trying to get one or two. So what we really want to thank is Kelly McLoughlin, who is a career specialist and works at Cappuccino, who helped to encourage young people. So we had these five young ladies, I'll say young, they're, they're young to me, young ladies, and we brought them in and we made it more casual. We brought them in at city hall, not here, so that it could be a little bit of them understanding city hall and how it works. We interviewed them in a, around the table, more a, shall we say, relaxed environment. We asked questions, and in addition, we also then asked them what questions they have of us or of San Bruno. We also asked them for their advice at their ages, what aren't they seeing? And for their age at Cappuccino, and they all have to be, they are from Cap, is what could we be doing better? So we actually took about an hour through this process, but I thought it was rewarding to actually listen and have that inner dialogue so that they understood a little bit more about city hall. So with that- So with that, what we're gonna do, like as we usually do, I'll ask for nominations. We'll need a second. And then we will come back and then take a vote for one candidate. So I'll open the floor.
I'd like to nominate Nadia Koshafa.
We have Nadia for nomination and a second. Is there other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Tanya Fish.
Is there a second to Tanya? Is there a second to Tanya? I'll go ahead and second. Is there any other nominations?
Before we do that, I'd just like to say, I wish I could nominate all of them.
Yes.
They were, they were personable, they were knowledgeable, they were, they were perky, they were so many things that we, as a city, we can use their talent. And I encourage any of them that do not make it to this, because we can only nominate one, that they still participate in some manner. They can go to the bike and pad meetings, they can go to any of the meetings and make themselves heard. So it was really a struggle to land on one person, and as you see, we haven't yet, but I was very impressed with all of them.
And that's a very fair and accurate statement, that any person or persons, person here this evening is good, and they're all good. Marty?
So I got late to that meeting. And I apologized to the applicants, and I caught the last parts of the last two applicants. So I really can't fairly recommend, and based on their interview, based on their application, they're all great. And what you've already heard here is having youth wanting to become involved is something that is, it's really, makes you feel good, because there's people that care enough out there. So I just wanted to point that out. And again, I apologize for being late to that, so.
And you let us know, so it wasn't, you just walked in late, you let us know?
I was coaching my-
Yeah, but he let us know, so. Okay, so we have two nominations. We have Nadia and we have Tanya. We have a motion and a second for each. So why don't we begin with, go alpha, if that's okay with everybody? We'll go to Nadia. All those in favor of Nadia, please say aye.
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 And then let's go to Tanya. All in favor of Tanya?
Well, we fill the position.
I understand.
We really need to do the vote.
So, okay, we're good with Tanya. They're so good, is that is what is concerning. And what I'm going to do is, Nadia is the appointed person. What I am gonna do is I'm gonna take the time to call each of the students myself, that were not appointed, and to personally thank them on behalf of the council and the community, and still encourage them to be engaged. And, oh, I'm sorry, and so you have a 4O, and I'm gonna, correct me, with one abstention? With one abstention by Marty Medina. Okay, item C.
Item 6C, adopt resolution approving the design, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Golden Bay Construction, Inc., for the installation of bulb outs for the Transit Corridor Pedestrian Connection Improvement Phase II project at the intersections of San Bruno Avenue and Easton, Masson, Mills avenues, in the amount of $613,002, approving a construction contingency of $92,000, appropriating $75,000 for Measure A, and approving a total budget in the amount of $924,291.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Haywan Ritchie. I am the city engineer for the City of San Bruno. The item I have before you tonight is the award of a construction contract for the Transit Corridor Pedestrian Connection Phase II project. The recommendations are as follows, for City Council to adopt a resolution approving design, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Golden Bay Construction, Incorporated, for the project in the amount of $613,002, approving a construction contingency of $92,000, appropriating $75,000 for Measure A, and approving a total budget in the amount of $924,291. The goal of the Transit Corridor Pedestrian Connection Improvement Program and the Capital Improvement Program is to enhance the pedestrian experience within the transit corridor in accordance with the general plan and transit corridor plan. Pedestrian enhancements described in the Transit Corridor Plan included bulb outs and pavement treatments to increase the visibility of crosswalks. Two projects have already been completed within the program. The first was completed in September 2013, consisted of ADA accessible curb ramps, sidewalk repairs, and planting of street trees along Huntington Avenue and San Bruno Avenue. The second project, which was accepted, or completed in May 2017, consisted of new landscaping and irrigation in the open areas of Huntington Avenue north of I-380. I would like to mention that those first two projects were grant-funded. Oh, apologize, I flipped the screen. This Phase II project, which is added in before you tonight, the original scope was to install ADA-compliant curb ramps and street furniture along San Bruno Avenue, art murals on Huntington Avenue under I-380 overpass, pedestrian lighting on El Camino Real under I-380 overpass. Two grants were awarded totaling $850,000. Safe routes to transit provided $500,000, and a San Mateo County Transportation Authority grant provided $350,000, for a total of $850,000. Subsequently, there were concerns regarding the timeline and the ability to deliver the project as originally scoped, primarily due to the Caltrans right-of-way encroachments that would be required for work under the I-380 overpasses. There were concerns that additional requirements, conditions, could increase costs but also primarily delay the project from being delivered in time. There was also consideration for the timeline needed for public engagement for the art murals. Therefore, staff investigated a project re-scoping. Staff reviewed available traffic collision data and, whoops, prepared in 2017 this collision heat map. What this map shows is an image of the collision heat map generated by Transport Injury Mapping System, using data from the statewide integrated traffic records system, otherwise known as SWITTERS. This data represents the years from 2008 to 2016. Areas that are shaded in green, yellow, orange, and red are locations where collisions have occurred, resulting in injury. Areas with higher frequency or more severe levels of injury are shown in increasingly warmer colors in orange and red. When overlaid with the limits of the transit corridor, it becomes apparent that there is a hotspot along San Bruno Avenue between El Camino Real and Huntington Avenue, which is shaded in the red, and it's toward the center of the screen. Staff subsequently also included the most recent updated information to include 2017 information, and similarly, there is the hotspot on San Bruno Avenue. This was a map specifically for bicycle and pedestrian injuries. With this information, a project re-scope was developed. It avoided work within Caltrans right-of-way, which El Camino is. The project improvements included bulb outs with two curb ramps at each corner between Green Avenue and Mills Avenue on San Bruno Avenue, rectangular rapid flashing beacon at San Bruno Avenue and Easton Avenue intersection, high-visibility striping, and incidental to this work would be storm drain, catch basin relocation, and conforming paving work at the intersections to allow the bulb outs to work. I will provide in the subsequent slides, a zoom-in of each intersection. Contract documents completed in 2019, sorry, January 2019. The proposed improvements including solving bulb outs at the intersection corners, which increase pedestrian visibility to drivers and reduces the length of pedestrian travel across San Bruno Avenue. Each proposed bulb out runs a length of approximately 25 feet along San Bruno Avenue. This distance was needed to accommodate space for two curb ramps at each corner. The consultant conducted a turning movement evaluation to confirm whether the proposed corners would allow vehicles of up to 35 feet in overall length, which is typical of delivery trucks, to clear turns without requiring drivers to extend into adjacent travel lanes. And based on their evaluation, they determined that travel into adjacent lanes would not be required. In conjunction with the evaluation, there was also an assessment of how many, the impact of the bulb outs on parking spaces. And it was determined that if all four intersections were to be constructed as shown, that eight parking stalls total would be lost on San Bruno Avenue. The base bid is at Easton Avenue. There are currently in-pavement flashers that are difficult to maintain. Those would be replaced with a rapid flashing beacon that are above ground. As you can see, also three spots would potentially be lost. There are some existing red curbs, and so there would not be a loss on the northeast corner. And also in the southeast corner, there is red curb, however, it was determined that one spot would be lost. On Masson, three spots would also be lost. On Green, one spot would be impacted. And at Mills Avenue, two spaces would be impacted. The project was advertised in the local newspaper in January, on January 28th and February 4th, 2019. Notice to bidders was sent to 90 contractors, posted on the city's website, and sent to five plan rooms. The lowest base bid was from Golden Bay Construction. Their additive items were also the lowest. Golden Bay has satisfactory, satisfactorily completed numerous concrete construction projects for the public agencies in the Bay Area, including the City of San Bruno. Based on their experience and performance, staff determined that Golden Bay Construction meets the qualifications to perform the work for the Transit Corridor Pedestrian Connection Improvement Phase II project. As mentioned previously, there are two grant fundings totaling $850,000. Staff is recommending to award the base bid, bid additives 1 and 3, primarily to most effectively expend the available funding without having to appropriate city funding as much would be required to award all intersections. And as previously mentioned, approximately eight parking spaces along San Bruno Avenue would be removed. This is a summary of the fiscal impact for design, construction, 15% contingency, and 10% administration inspection cost during construction. The total project cost is about $924,000. In order to make the shortfall with the grant of $850,000, a $75,000 appropriation would be required. There are some alternatives for staff's consideration. One is to award the base bid only. However, this will result in a loss of the SMCTA grant of $350,000, and three parking spaces would be removed. Second alternative would be not to award the contract for the project at all, which would result in the forfeiting of all grants and potential impact to future ability to obtain grants. The third option listed here would be to not award the contractor Phase II and reject all bids, instruct staff to re-advertise. This could incur additional costs and delay the contract such that we're unable to meet the deadlines for the grants. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving design, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Golden Bay, Incorporated, for the project in the amount of $613,002, approving a construction contingency of $92,000, appropriating $92,000 for Measure A, and approving a total budget in the amount of $924,291. Thank you, I'm now available for any questions the city council may have.
Questions from council for the city engineer staff? Michael? Okay. Laura?
To the chair, first of all, excellent presentation, it was very well presented. So just what I understand, so going back to that heat map, really the section between El Camino and San Mateo Avenue on San Bruno Avenue has a number of accidents. Is it mostly pedestrian-related, or is it vehicle accidents?
This particular map shows only pedestrian and bicycle collisions-
Okay.
-from 2008 to 2017.
Okay, and so that's why the bulb outs is really probably the best solution in really, as you said, decreasing the amount of length of space that they've got to travel.
Correct.
And then the calming measures too, as well. Because-
Yes.
Definitely cars are speeding down that, and so is that a sense of slowing down as well, just those in itself?
Absolutely, that is one of the goals.
Okay.
Until their driver awareness as well.
Okay, well, safety is definitely number one, so, thank you.
You're welcome. No, I think this is the first time I've seen this kind of map. I think it's great because it's very visual and easy to understand, and you're kind of going, oh my goodness. So I thank you for that, that's, it was very interesting. I, it's too bad we lose parking spaces, but as Laura said, safety's our, you know, our consideration for this, so I think it's something we have to do, and I think it's the solution that you've come up with is fine.
Marty?
Thank you. And thank you for securing the grants. It's, that should, that's huge, $850,000 that we didn't have to get from, directly from the taxpayers, somewhere or another, you know, everybody's paying for that grant somewhere or another. But there's five intersections that cross San Bruno Avenue. And the first at the west side, Hensley, is a really funky intersection because it's so close to El Camino. Was anything looked at that location?
Not to my awareness, not at this time.
Right, okay. So looking at the amount of money that we have, looking at that heat map, but we still have one of those streets, other than Hensley, because that's, I think, I went by there today, just because I had a couple, I had a couple of questions from a couple of residents about it. And you look at this project, and you're like, that much money for three intersections, right? So at first you think, wow, that's just a lot of money. But there are storm drains that need to be relocated, right? And there's paving involved, so construction is expensive. And as our city is dealing with these tax revenues that could possibly come in to help pay for this, because otherwise, without this grant, it wouldn't happen. When I was out there, a resident came up to me and said, hey, what are you doing? They actually recognized me, so it was kind of like, oh, just checking this out. Well, it'd be great if you guys also did something over here on Euclid. And it's like, the only reason why this is getting done is because we have grants. We would love to do more things. That map, you know, off the Transit Corridor Plan, there's a bright red spot there. We should fix that. Well, how are we gonna fix it if we don't have the money? Safety's priority one. So we're gonna enter this budget, and hopefully we can figure out, I would ask that we contact Golden Bay and say, hey, look, you know, we would like to get this other work done. You gave us your bid, is there something we could figure out? You know, negotiate that, figure it out, or... When the contractor's here is the time to get most of the work done with, when you have a mobilized contractor, they come out and they could give you a lower price because they're already here. So I would, I would see if, that you could, with the city manager's blessing and council's blessing, that you could possibly try to talk about that and find out what that cost would be to do that other intersection, because it's gonna be kind of funky. You're gonna have two that are on one side of the street, right? And there's one missing. So we're fixing the two, the two that are, that, they all need help, right? They're all in red, so we're not fixing one of the red, and it's $200,000. As we approach our budget, as we start looking at the other reds, I would like to, you know, of course, try to get more funding, right? For more grants, but I think there's a clear spot there that for $200,000 you can, or less, you could, maybe we can figure something out there. So I'm in favor of the project. And I'll leave it at that.
Sure. So in response to that, we will certainly go back and talk to the contractor about additive two or alternative two that's not currently in. The bid is $200,000 for that. Some of the conversations that staff and I have had is, what are the other funding sources do we have as we look at all of our requests that staff have already submitted for the upcoming year? Can we push some things around to fund that additional $200,000, or whatever it ends up being? Because as the heat map shows, it is one of the most critical areas. And staff is- And staff is recommending that we move forward with this because we certainly want to use those grant dollars, but we do have a valid bid for that other location of $200,000. And so we have and will continue to have those conversations and should we have a way to fund that, we will bring it back to council. Michael?
Thank you. I'm also in favor of the, of the project. I think anything that we can do to improve the, the appearance and the traffic situation in that section is definitely going to be welcome. I cross that street a lot myself. I cross in that area Saturday mornings, I go for a run and getting across El Camino and getting across here are, you know, the very challenging situations. So I think this, this will definitely be an improvement. The question I had was around the integration of this with other projects. And I know this is an area that, that whole area there is, you know, kind of slated to be, you know, redeveloped. We've seen at the far end of the eastern end of this, how, you know, the new projects are coming online. And as we move forward, I want to make sure that we're sort of aware of what else might be coming and if there's an opportunity to do something like add fiber conduit when we have some, some sections of this open or start thinking about those things, that we sort of plan them out accordingly. And also, in the past, I've mentioned, you know, possibly modifying our municipal code so that once we've made improvements like these and somebody comes along and does other improvements, that they have to be required to restore everything exactly the way we fixed it, rather than just slapping something together and ruining something that we, we've, you know, spent quite a bit of money on. So those are my only comments.
Okay. Anything else for the city engineer or staff? Any action by council on this item is a resolution.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adopt the resolution. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Thank you again to staff and my colleagues. I echo those comments. Item D.
Item 6D, receive an authorized mayor to sign statement of concern to California Senate Bill 50, Weiner, as amended on Housing Opportunity Mobility Equity and Stability Act and its impact to the City of San Bruno.
So this must be a good presentation where the city manager, he just left his seat. So, I mean, he's over there.
Sure. I will explain why I'm here. I'm here actually sitting in for, or standing in, rather, for our community development director, Darcy. We actually have a number of our senior executive staff attending a essentials of emergency management training session in San Luis Obispo. Actually, everybody who you see here tonight attended a session in January and the last half is attending a session this week, actually funded by a grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. And so in Darcy's absence, I will present this item here tonight and we are currently pulling it up. Melissa, can you help? So I'll give a little intro while we're pulling up the PowerPoint. So we are giving a presentation tonight on Senate Bill 50. As the city council and many members of the public will know, there are a number of bills that were passed last year and then a number of bills that are also pending this year to deal with the housing crisis facing the state of California. And so the city staff has been tracking a number of the CASA Compact bills as well as SB 50. SB 50 is sponsored by Senator Weiner, but also has a host of other sponsors in both the Senate and the Assembly. And so one of the things we've been doing is working with some of the other cities in San Mateo County to monitor the potential impacts of SB 50 as it would relate here in San Bruno. And so tonight, we wanted to give the community an update of some of that work and also give the city council a update of a statement of concern that we are recommending that the city council issue on behalf of the City of San Bruno.
And then as we're getting to that moment, I was going to say also, we can hear from the vice mayor as well after, who was in Sacramento today, actually speaking to legislatures and going through that, as well as, I know the city manager and I attended a meeting on March 15th in Redwood City, and that was with a representative from each of the jurisdictions and even from Santa Clara, Sunnyvale. And it was again, in regards to the same type of situation and concerns that agencies are having. So we can also hear from that too, at the appropriate time or whenever the manager wishes.
Can we have?
Yes.
Irene. Irene, would you mind? Again, Irene left at, what, seven this morning or?
Yes. I left early and stayed later than, than we had originally intended. So I am the city's representative at, on our CCAG board, that is the City County Association of Governments. It's a regional board that has one representative from every city. There's 20 cities in San Mateo County and has one representative from the Board of Supervisors. So it was, that body was originally intended to be only a congestion management body. In its inception, 28 years ago, that's how it started. There's a lot of other details, so I won't bore you with. But we have evolved so that part of our mission is to keep track of legislation that has an impact on local, local entities, which includes all of our cities. So having said that, a subcommittee of our, our full board is a legislative committee. It is comprised of 11 members. I am the chair of that this year and we send a delegation to Sacramento every year and meet with different legislators and their staff to discuss the impacts their proposed legislation would have. So that's what we did all day today. We met with, unfortunately, we were scheduled to meet with Senator Weiner. Unfortunately, he was caught up in some other meetings, but he did send his staff and they took copious notes. We met with Assemblyman Kevin Mullen, Assembly Member Philip, Phil Ting, and then we met with the Deputy Director for Legislation at California Department of Housing and Community Development, who also took copious notes, and the Assembly Housing and Community Development Representative, and two staff members from the government, governor's office, and Senator Jerry Hill. So we met with all those people. Each time we met, we had a good half an hour with each of them and we spent time discussing our concerns about not just SB 50, but all the different housing bills. There's over 200 housing bills that are coming up this legislative session and they're all trying to put a fix on the housing issues that we have. And you heard from the very beginning of our community priority survey, that's the first thing that's on there, is people concerned about housing costs and, and then, then again, some people concerned about overdeveloping. So we as cities are in a conundrum. We are elected to, you know, serve you residents and to protect what you have, but we're also mandated through the state to provide housing, not provide housing, to allow to developers to provide housing for people who would come in and move in, in our cities. Senate Bill 50, and it looks like Javon is ready to explain it, so he has more details and you can look at it and go ahead and do that and then I'll tell you what we, we did the rest of the day.
Sure. So we have recovered from our technical difficulties. So a quick overview of our presentation is a quick overview of SB 50. We want to review staff's analysis and areas of concern. And then what we're doing is we're requesting the mayor, that the city council authorize the mayor to sign a statement of concern with regard to SB 50. So SB 50, what is it? And some of these points are taken directly from Senator Weiner. So SB 50 aims to legalize more housing near, near job centers and public transit by overriding what's been termed hyper restrictive low density zoning while protecting against displacement of renters in vulnerable communities. It really aims to address California's unprecedented housing shortage. And some of the statistics cited are staggering. We all know them because we live in the peninsula, but California's housing deficit is about 3.5 million homes, which is roughly equivalent to the housing deficit in all of the other 49 states in the country. And so SB 50 really has a laudable goal. It's aimed at actually having more housing constructed. One of the challenges, or the other thing that SB 50 does to accomplish this, however, is that it proposes sweeping statewide changes to local land use control. And so it provides developers, housing developers, with a number of incentives that would apply to all cities, including San Bruno. It provides a waiver of local regulations with respect to density, how many units per, per square foot. In regard to height, how tall buildings can be, and in regard to onsite parking standards. It also provides up to three additional incentives or condition, or waivers under the state density bonus law. So what does all of that really mean? What it means is that San Bruno and other cities in California would have very limited control over the housing that's developed within one half mile of fixed rail stations, for us, that's Caltrain, and within one quarter mile of a high frequency bus stop in a job-rich area. It is currently unclear if that will apply to El Camino Real, but a number of analysts from various regional bodies have taken a look at that. Some have actually concluded not, others have concluded that it may. And so the bill is still in proposed stage, but there was recently a meeting of a number of cities along the peninsula. And we think that, a number of cities mentioned that the true intent is really to have it apply in a high-speed bus route similar to El Camino. And so we're paying close attention because should these apply to El Camino Real, it will have sweeping impacts along San Bruno, our major road artery and other cities in the peninsula. And it limits cities' ability to control height. Actually, it says that buildings cannot be lower than 45 or 55 feet, depending on various conditions, but that's essentially four, four stories within one half mile of fixed rail. It also prevents cities from having a minimum parking standard and we'll talk a little bit about that and the implications of that. But as we know, a number of our areas for additional housing, but residential neighborhoods that already have parking issues. And so why don't we talk about the staff analysis? And so the staff analysis is really that SB 50 really aims to address a valid issue of statewide concern. However, its impacts will be significantly negative on San Bruno. San Bruno's development regulations are really tailored to the various needs of the local community and our unique characteristics. And there's a couple of subbullets that I want to go through. As I said, much of our developable land for new housing really abuts low-density residential neighborhoods. What is low-density residential? Well, when you look at our downtown San, San Mateo Ave, San Bruno Ave and El Camino, all of those which are in our transit corridor, abut single-family residential neighborhoods that oftentimes are one or two stories and may have some apartment buildings, oftentimes one or two stories, one to six unit apartment buildings. But it's really low density. San Bruno has adopted a Transit Corridors Plan and Measure N, which actually increased density around our transit centers in the, in the TCP, which is actually one of the goals of SB 50. And so we think that San Bruno has actually, unlike a number of cities, taken a step to in, in the, to address the core goal of SB 50, but we've done it in a way that's locally responsible. Many of our neighborhoods, commercial areas or other uses, largely schools, daycares, metal offices, are not near transit or within walking distance of accessible transit. And one of the statistics that we cite in the letter is that the elevation change from our Caltrain station to the highest neighborhood is over 800 feet. Just the natural hilly topography of San, of San Bruno really does not lend itself for all of our neighborhoods to be walkable and accessible by transit. And so being able to manage parking is critical for a city like San Bruno. So what are our areas of concern? We really have three. One, we think SB 50 disrespects local values and penalizes community, communities like ours that have, that have adopted thoughtful approaches to increasing housing density. And largely what we're saying by that is San Bruno is not a N B community. It's not a no in my backyard community. In fact, San Bruno is a community that in 2014 approved Measure N to increase density and with the Transit Corridors Plan, densities have increased upwards of, in some areas, 90 feet or seven stories, in some areas, four stories and five stories. But we've done that respectfully and cognizant of the local issues that abound. When, when San Bruno went through the Transit Corridors Plan, we had extensive community meetings. We had two advisory bodies. There were residential surveys, there were community workshops, there were city council and planning sessions and numerous other public meetings and it was thoughtful. And we really think a statewide formula where developers can come into our community following a statewide format that doesn't reflect the thoughtful process that we have gone through really does not suit San Bruno well. And so we are recommending that the council join the accord of other cities to highlight some of the areas of concern with regard to really taking away local control. The next item is SB 50 strips local control with respect to parking. As mentioned earlier, parking in San Bruno is significant. It's oftentimes when new development is proposed, the, the largest issue that we're concerned with. And as the city council knows, we recently amended the parking standards in, in the TCP to actually increase the parking that new developments have to provide, largely being is, in San Bruno, we are dealing with a built environment largely from the mid 1900s where the road infrastructure and the houses don't really accommodate the number of vehicles that are, that are owned by our residents. And so what we don't want to do is, we don't want to replicate some of the challenges in the past. And by stripping cities' ability as a way to regulate parking for new developments, really what we're fearful of is that we'll replicate some of the prior mistakes. SB 50 and some of the leaders of SB 50 want to encourage additional transit use. They want to encourage very active, walkable, bikeable, pedestrian communities, as do we. And that really is part of the intent of SB 50, I'm sorry, of the Transit Corridors Plan and SB 50. But we think doing that in a way that really strips our ability to work with proposed developments is actually detrimental to San Bruno communities. And we have a number of projects, some that will be coming forward to the city council in a number of months, where he, where we have been successful working with developers and letting them know about the unique challenges in, in San Bruno and actually receiving changes to the proposed projects where additional parking was provided. The third item is SB 50 erodes a locality's ability to obtain design changes and community benefits to mitigate some of the negative impacts. And one of those that I, that I just mentioned is parking. Another of those negative impacts is setting back, or what's often called stepping back from our residential neighborhoods. Because San Mateo Ave, because El Camino Real and San Bruno but residential neighborhoods, the Transit Corridors Plan envisions setbacks from those very low-density residential areas. SB 50, with allowing developers up to three additional concessions for, based on the state density bonus law, has the ability for developers to request and receive concessions that will not be discretionary to the city council. It will actually be something that they will follow a format outlined by the state. And so in closing, we have developed a letter and really are, want to educate the community and the city council about some of the challenges that we see with, with SB 50. And the letter articulates these three concerns as well as further articulating and requesting that if SB 50 or anything similar to SB 50 is passed, that Senator Weiner and the other co-sponsors really consider exempting communities that have adopted a Transit Corridors Plan. Because as I said before, our Transit Corridors Plan went through a very rigorous community process and a vote of the people, and it was done thoughtfully with respect to the unique characteristics of San Bruno. And so we, we will be formally requesting that the city council agrees that communities like ours be exempted, exempted from any of these statewide requirements. Here, happy to take questions. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or do you want to continue?
It's up to you.
Why don't we go back to Irene and allow her to continue with?
Why don't we go back to Irene and allow her to continue with her day in Sacramento, which I'm sure is warm.
It was warm and extremely interesting, and everything our city manager said was absolutely true. The concerns, let's see, the difficulty is the assemblymen, and not just Mr. Weiner, but many of the ones that we talked to, wanted solutions. They didn't want to hear over and over again, "It takes away local control." They've heard that, they don't care. They wanted solutions. So the piece that the city manager talked about, about exempting cities that have, already have their Transit Corridor Plan-type things in place, I brought that up actually before to the CCAG's Legislative Committee, and they enthusiastically supported that. And that was the message that we brought to every single legislator and staff person that we talked to. That met with some very positive feedback and kind of a way out for everybody to say, "Okay, you are making an effort." And I kept repeating that we started our process in 2013, and we had many community sessions and had a lot of community input. So that kind of perked people up and made them pay attention. And also, we talked about community, giving communities, which they do often in many state legislature, time to process and do their own Transit Corridor Plans or community plans. Redwood City calls theirs a community plan. So again, they're taking all that back to Senator Weiner, and Senator Chu is another person who's supporting that kind of bill. There's amendments taking place tomorrow. We'll hear more about everything that's going on. But again, I want to emphasize, it's not just 50/50 is kind of the fountainhead, as you would, of all these 200 different housing bills. And I think we really need to, well, I mean, we put that, CCAG is paying strict attention to all of them, and I will be happy to report back to anything that we do. Every single person we talked to found it vitally important to have the letters that we're proposing tonight, those kinds of things. And I don't know if this is appropriate, and I guess it's not really because it's not on the agenda, but I'd like us to have the ability, and we can talk about it next meeting, but have the ability to write letters that follow general policies, but sometimes they need to be written and signed by the mayor, like now, tomorrow, before we have another meeting. So I don't know how far we can push that, but maybe that's a discussion for next time. The other, oh, the other thing I want to say, and people keep talking about it, the SB 1 monies that is coming into all the cities, there's been talk about withholding that money if cities don't hit their regional housing target numbers. And maybe I should explain that. So the regional housing numbers are numbers that the state sends to us that says, "You have to zone and allow for building of X amount of houses in these different categories: market, below-market, you know, low and middle and all those different things." So they're called RENA numbers. There was, there is a bill out there that is saying that if you don't produce those housing numbers, then we will withhold SB 1 transportation money. And that's the transportation money that helps pay for our new paving of our roads and some of the safety issues and road improvements that we're talking about. The governor wants everyone to know he is not supporting that, he is not going to do that, and there is no legal precedent for anybody to do that. So a lot of, we hadn't heard that from anyone. We kept hearing they were going to do it, they were going to do it. So they are not going to do it, the governor is not going to do it. So that was, that was good news. And there's tons more. We were there for six hours. But if you have other questions, let me know.
Thank Irene for the feedback from today's trip with the other electeds from other communities. Questions of, oh, there you go, city manager over there, city manager, Irene, Laura.
So does the letter focus on, as she said, that they're not interested in saying, "No, no, no, we're not interested in that. We are interested, we're very interested in it. We know we need to approve housing in our community, but we've got a plan, and we have been working many years on this plan."
Yeah. And so the letter talks about that, and the letter is actually titled "A Statement of Concern" and not "A Statement of Opposition." And it doesn't follow the typical format. There are some form letters out there that cities are sending. We really wanted to develop a letter that was unique to San Bruno and that articulated the process that we went through. And so we went through a couple different versions to come up with something that we thought really embodied the conditions in San Bruno, because we are not like every other city on the peninsula. We are actually a city that has gone through a very thoughtful process and that is working with developers to develop in a way that respects the unique challenges that we have, sometimes around parking in other areas, but other times it's really setting back from those low-density housing.
Were there questions or comments, or both? Marty?
One size doesn't fit all, especially when it comes from state or federal government. That's clearly stated. I find it interesting, the statement of concern, it's a nice way of not saying no, but I want to say no. This isn't fit for us, so no. It has in there at the very end that we're willing to work with them, but for now, no. That's it.
Yeah, because I was going to say, go ahead, Irene.
Okay. And there are many cities that are saying no, but he's dismissing those. I mean, he's taking the no's and going, "Okay." But he's taking, but that doesn't get us anywhere. So I think the letter is a nice balance between saying, "We're unique, this is not going to fly with us," you know, all the concerns that have been written there, "But if you're going to push this through, at least, at least consider that we've already done what you are, in essence, asking us to do." My biggest problem, and not biggest problem, one of the big problems that the city and individuals should have is their parking requirements. This particular draft that's in our, that's in our agenda packet says .5, so a half of a parking spot per unit. It doesn't define unit. It doesn't say per bedroom. It says per unit. So you can have a three-bedroom unit that requires a half of a parking space for that unit. This is old. They took that out. They require zero. And he has, and he, when we were questioning him about that, he said, "That would be a market-driven product," and that developers would supply parking if the market required it. Well, maybe somewhere else, but not here, because housing is so expensive anyway. So, you know, and this, that, he took that parking out after he met with us and we at CCAG for an hour and heard all these different cities say, "No, no, 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 no." So I understand why you're saying what you're saying. I agree wholeheartedly, except that it won't get us anywhere. So that's my comment.
Michael?
I was just going to comment that I agree with the content and the tone of the letter. I think it was very well-written. I support the sentiment. I don't know why Scott didn't get the message last time around, but hopefully this time he'll realize that this is not what anyone in the state is looking for. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, I keep doing this, but it was, like I said, a long day and we heard a lot of things. Unfortunately, he is hearing from many people that it is what they want. I know. And it's just, there are, there are cities that are battling NIMBYism, and their councils or their board of supervisors want something from the state to force their communities to accept high-density near-transit. Oh, and just to clarify too, the definition there, thinking about clarifying about the bus routes, is a 15-minute headway. So if you have, if you're standing at a bus stop and every 15 minutes, say, a bus comes by and you can get on it, that is considered, I forget what the term is now, but that's the high, high...
High frequency.
High frequency, thank you. High-frequency bus routes, which is El Camino and San Bruno Avenue. So we would be impacted quite a bit.
Yeah, and I think this is something, I think it was two years ago, at the Progress Seminar, Scott Weiner was there, and he's served on a panel, and which he heard from a lot of, obviously it's county-based in San Mateo, and he heard from a lot of folks that were, "No, and it's not, you're not working with us." And back then, I remember his point is too, is that, "Well, you folks," and he means folks as far as elected bodies and/or communities, "are not doing anything. So now we need to step up it because you're not doing it." So I also, when city manager and I were at the Northern County Mayor's Manager Lunch in Colma, a lot of, some of the elected, some of the mayors there were also saying and hearing the same feedback, is they don't want to hear local control. Tired of it? You used that last time? You're saying it again? How are you going to work with us? So, yes, where, I don't know why he doesn't get it, but at the same time, he is hearing, as Michael said, he is hearing from others differently. There were two members of the Board of Supervisors for San Mateo who endorsed a resolution to bring forward to the board to support it, and then it got put on hold as far as the resolution, is because obviously folks and pushback probably within other jurisdictions in this county came forward. But I think the importance of it is too, we have a unique quality that other communities don't have, and we need to really tell that story, and we have to consider San Bruno, who we represent. And I think we do need, even Half Moon Bay, who feels they may not get much of it, depending on the bus route, they won't get anything, they have, it was in the paper, they have a letter of concern. So they're even bringing in themselves for the greater good of the county. So I think just to say no, and no, then where do we go? I think to say, "Here's our uniqueness of San Bruno, here's what this community has done." And again, talking doesn't hurt, and again, they're offering amendments, so we have to be able to put in our two cents and fight for our community as well as support our neighbors. But in essence, we're elected here, so we need to keep that open dialogue, and if there's favorable input that's coming for it, I think being willing to talk, we may still get somewhere. Those are my comments. But it is a concern, and I'll tell you, for the, a lot of us go to various meetings, but it has been something that's very concerning to a lot of the electeds throughout this county. And like I said, when the city manager and I went to the Redwood City Library and met with 20, 25 agencies, it was quite concerning, and that was with Jerry Hill, who sponsored that meeting, and he's heard the same thing. And granted, he's one senator, as it was reminded, but, you know, it's back and it has more momentum than it did last time since 2018. Anyway, those are my comments. Any other further discussion or comments in regards to this letter?
Mr. Mayor?
Please, Marty.
So I'm not saying, "No, I don't want to talk anymore." I'm just saying, currently, the way that the bill is written and it's being amended, it's no. Now, they could come back and chank something and we'll be like, "Okay, now it's yes." But the way it's written, no means no. Doesn't mean we don't want to talk about it, doesn't mean we're willing to work with it, but how can we get more clear than that? And if they're saying, "Well, if you say no, we're going to disregard you anyhow," then it's like, well, saying, "We're just concerned about it," what does that get us?
The, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I don't know if there's a chair, go ahead.
Sorry.
You ready?
It was a very passionate day. The crux of the matter is, he's looking for, he's looking for a way to accommodate people or cities like ours, I think, from talking to his staff and talking to him at an earlier time. And for us to say, "We don't want, we don't want you to take away local control," which we don't, "We don't want you to give too many consensuses to developers," which we don't, "We don't want you to take away our ability to regulate parking," which we don't, all those things, he's heard over and over and over again, okay? What he wants is a way to solve it. So that's, that's why I kept emphasizing, if a city has a plan, which we do, that city should be allowed to implement their plan, is the message that we, over and over again, said today. And any city, and the other piece of that, which I don't think I said, any city who has, who wants to make a plan, who to develop a plan, should be allowed to have a time period to do that, say, three years. And we also suggested that they help, that the state help with the technical end of it and the, you know, the planning costs of it. And those pieces, and as long as it, the plans, which ours does, allows for higher density and does, in essence, the things that he is looking for, like putting it near transit, he is willing to entertain those changes. That's why this letter is important, and that's why it is important, today was so important to convey the message that we are giving you a solution that we think will work for any city, any city willing to go through the process that we did, or some iteration of it. So again, to say, just to say, "No, we'll talk to you, but no." He's, he's done that. He wants a, he wants a solution from us.
Okay.
Yep.
So we are providing that to this letter?
Yes.
But can't be really, really clear, it's in Sacramento, you either, it's this or that. Okay, so for this, it's no. Now you give that, so we're not there?
Yeah, and not in a...
We're not there yet, we're not there yet.
Committee.
Do we need to do this today? Okay, so issue of concern, and the mayor signs it, it's great, and then, go ahead. I see you want to jump in there, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Marty, go ahead. I mean, honor roll. City manager.
All right. I just want to add one comment and then point us to the conclusion in the letter and maybe proffer a little tweaks. But specifically with regard to the Bay Area, I think it's important to note that you have Senator Nancy Skinner from Berkeley, the mayor of San Francisco, the mayor of Oakland, and the mayor of San Bruno all supporting SB 50. And, I'm sorry, San Jose, sorry, Sam Liccardo, San Jose, I'm sorry, Rico Medina. But you have, I'm sorry, Sam Liccardo, the mayor of San Jose, the mayor of Oakland, Nancy Skinner from Berkeley, and the mayor, London Breed of San Francisco, all supporting SB 50. On the peninsula, you have most of the cities that have said something sending letters of opposition. A lot of the ire from the SB 50 supporters is frankly targeted at the Silicon Valley. And so it is an expectation that the Silicon Valley cities will say, "No, we're against it. We have taken a slightly different approach to say we have areas of concern. We do not think this is the right fit for San Bruno. We clearly articulate why, and we articulate the very thoughtful process that we went through with Measure N and the Transit Corridors Plan." We end the letter by saying, "In closing, San Bruno appreciates your willingness to meet with the CCAG Legislative Committee, of which Councilmember Irene O'Connell is the chair of, and applauds your passion and willingness to tackle the housing crisis that is affecting Californians in the Bay Area and across the state. Unfortunately, as written, SB 50 will harm San Bruno and other communities across the state. We strongly encourage you to consider the issues that we raised in this letter and avoid penalizing communities that have adopted Transit Corridors Plans, which increase heightened density near transit centers from any statewide requirements. San Bruno looks forward to collaboratively working with you and other state legislators on strategies and funding mechanisms to ensure public transit and housing further in ways to ensure that local issues... in ways to ensure that local issues are thoughtfully considered and incorporated during the development process." And so, I think we are clearly saying no, but I think we are also saying, "We're willing to work with you," and we've articulated our concerns. I think there is a place here where we can add in the word "no," if that is...
Or, or something, just, no, but just as currently written?
We cannot support this item.
There you go.
So, unfortunately, as currently written, we cannot support this item, period. SB 50 will harm San Bruno and other communities. And so, that's the second sentence.
Because they also are still having in committee, they're still going through stuff. So, the letter can go up tomorrow, and it can change by Friday.
Absolutely. And there is a committee meeting tomorrow, and we are set to have the mayor sign the letter. We can redraft it and have the mayor sign the letter with this change and get it to the committee tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty?
Is what you're reading from what we have in our packet?
Yes, I read the conclusion, which is the last page, 404, of the letter in your packet. It starts with, "In closing, San Bruno appreciates..."
Okay. I didn't see the Irene O'Connell bit.
It, that's not in there, I added that. It says, "To me..."
Okay. All right, just making sure, just making sure, we're all talking the same thing. So, I got it. All right, all right, all right, I got it. You're going to revise it, you're going to put the word "no" in there somewhere or something strong.
How, how we talked? Okay, he just articulated it, so hopefully that, are you okay with that? Are you okay with that, Irene?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and the reason, you know, I'm glad we spent this time, but I think this is a message of being unified on this council, for this community, and that we're making it clear, and we are going to lengths of special meetings, Sacramento, in order to try to secure for our community what our residents expect. So, to me, it is very critical for this to be unanimous vote. With my signature, I would hope, and we don't have to, it doesn't have to be all of you, but I think that it's important that we're all on the same page and fighting equally and equitably for our community. So, yes.
Before we finish, so what could the resident out there do, right? They could write, they could write a letter, they can call Weiner or Hill or all of our legislatures, right?
They can.
Maybe Irene could kind of help us out on that.
Oh, absolutely. And every single legislator has a website page, and every single one of them has a contact, has contact information, and I know their staff, all, everybody pays attention to those things. You may not get, you'll get a, you know, "We have received this, thank you very much" reply, but I know they weigh them, they look, "Oh, now, here's a no, here's a yes, oh, look, here's a, here's a suggestion that we can work with, here's this and that." So, they are important. So, and I know Mr. Reichel sent a letter, and we appreciate that, and I know he's made comments in the past on patch, right? You've done those things, yes. So, right now, SB 50 is a moving target, and there are many people weighing in on it. And as the city manager said, there are big guns out there, San Francisco, San Jose, Berkeley, you know, there's other big cities that want it to pass. But if we offer an alternative that works, I think they will, I'm hoping, cross your fingers, that they will consider it and implement it in their, include it in their bill. So, having said all that, do you need a motion?
City attorney, do we need a motion or just agreement of the council?
Consensus.
So, Marty, Laura, Irene, Michael, is there unanimous consensus to have that letter drafted for my signature?
Yes.
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 Okay, I've heard yeses from all. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to comments from city council members. Think about it. Laura?
Nope.
Marty?
This weekend, we've already talked about Dia de los Niños, that's going to be going on. What was the start time? Does anybody remember off the top of their head? Sorry, 10, 12?
I think 12.
12 to 4. All right, it's a great event. If you're around, the weather should be pretty good, hopefully not as hot. And we have a comment from the public over here, Mr. Mayor.
Compost, 11 to 3, and medication turn-in, 10 to 2.
Okay.
No, no.
And, I'm sorry, and there's also what, a medication turn-in for your expired, or if you don't want any more drugs?
10 to 2.
10 to 2 at the police department. But the compost is really good, and we tell you, go back, is it back in Beckner Shelter, like this year? You bring your buckets, you know, bring, and take your compost. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? If not, no, I'm sorry, is it the end, that, public comments at the beginning of the meeting now? So, at this time, we're going to adjourn the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on May 14, 2019, at 7:00 here at the Senior Center, with that meeting adjourned.